I'd like to call the meeting to order. If you could please stand up. If there are any, is there anyone for special intentions?
Yes, I have a special intention. That was my neighbor, Ida Cloughton, that was found in the canal in District One in Lincoln Manor. So we really need to keep that family in prayer.
Councilman Branigan?
Yeah, if you guys could just keep praying for my dad. He's still in the hospital.
Anyone else?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
If we could remember the survivors and the people that lost their lives forty years ago in the plane crash in Kenner. If we could just keep them in our prayers.
Yes, thank you, Council Clerk. Thank you. Councilmember Dunn, would you please lead us in the prayer?
Sure. God and our Father, as we come together once again this hour in the evening, we just want to thank you for the city of Kenner. We thank you for this meeting. But dear God, we pray that you would give us wisdom, knowledge, and understanding that we may continue to move Kenner forward. Father, don't forget about our sick brother Branigan's father and for the people that lost their lives in the plane crash forty years ago. Don't forget about Ida Cloughton's family. We pray that we just lift them all up to you. God, we ask for guidance tonight. And we pray in our Lord and our Father name. Amen.
Mayor Glazer, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Chairman, you have a quorum. In accordance with Council Resolution Number B-14550, please be advised that all cellular telephones and other devices of this nature must be deactivated or silenced throughout the council meeting. Madam Chairman, we've received a request to take item, I'm sorry, to amend the agenda to include an item which would be considered Item 13B, a resolution electing a Kenner City Council President and Vice President. If there's anyone in the audience wishing to object to this item being added to the agenda, please come forward and voice your opinion now. Seeing none, I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Brennan, to amend the agenda to add the resolution as read by the clerk. Councilmembers, please vote to amend your agenda. Councilmember McKenney?
Yes.
Wilmot?
Yea.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schworth?
Yes.
Lahatt?
Yea.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero to amend your agenda. Madam Chairman, I've received a request to change the order of business to take Item 13B at the beginning of the meeting. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Brennan, to change the order of business. Councilmembers, please vote to change your order. Councilman Wilmot?
Yea.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schworth?
Yes.
Lahatt?
Yea.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yea.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 13B is a resolution electing a Kenner City Council President and Vice President. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Dunn. Councilmembers, please vote. Councilman Dunn?
Yes.
Schworth?
Yes.
Lahatt?
Yea.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yea.
Wilmot?
Yea.
Motion passes seven zero. Madam Chairman, I've also received a request to change the order of business to take Item 13A at the beginning of the meeting. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Brennan, to change the order of business. Councilmembers, please vote. Councilman Schworth?
Yes.
Lahatt?
Yea.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yea.
Wilmot?
Yea.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 13A is a resolution appointing Natalie Hall Totaglia, Clerk of the Council effective July 7, 2022. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Branigan.
Yes, I just want to say that Natalie, thank you for all of your hard work the past four years, and we look, I look forward to working with you the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Branigan, I mean Brennan?
Okay. We have nameplates. I'm a little nervous about the president can't read. I'm a little nervous that the clerk can't read her own name. So I think that we might need to defer this. You do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Branigan?
Natalie, the acorn doesn't fall far from the tree. Your mother was the council clerk for how many years?
About twenty-five.
Twenty-five years. And how long have you been the council clerk?
Since 2008.
2008. So that's, that's about fifteen, fourteen. So I thank you for your service. You're the greatest.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Councilman Lahatt?
Natalie, speaking for the rookies on this side of the table. You've been very great with us so far with the support and everything. We're learning a lot right now, but everybody loves you. I've heard out of them great things, but so far it's been incredible. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Well Natalie, you have definitely answered all my calls and all my questions. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilmot?
Thank you. And Natalie, I'd like to say a couple of things, dear. Your knowledge is invaluable. You really, really shine when it comes to assisting the council in these meetings. Just really, just really invaluable. Thank you so much, and your leadership shows when it comes to the issues that we have on this council. Sometimes I know you put on a spot and those answers just come right up because you have a great history here. So thank you very much, and we look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. I appreciate it. Councilmembers, please vote. Councilman Lahatt?
Yea.
Branigan?
Yes, indeed.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yes.
Wilmot?
Yes, absolutely.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schworth?
Yes.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I don't think we record the absolutely parts in there, do we?
Motion passes seven zero. Thanks for your confidence. Okay, we will go back to the regular agenda now, and we will take correspondence reports from the mayor, CAO, or department heads.
Mayor Glazer?
How about that?
Sounds good.
I'll try not to disappoint you or the members that are citizens of the city of Kenner. First of all, I'd like to thank the voters for voting for me and electing me mayor and congratulate each and every one of y'all for your election and reelection. I mean, it was an overwhelming, you would say, mandate that the residents weren't happy. I didn't come the last couple of meetings because it just became, it was too contentious dealing with the prior administration. So let the city get their business done. We really had no police department business on the last couple of agendas. So I decided to skip and come today and make my comments about thanking them for the last eight years also as chief. They've been tremendously supportive, and I plan on, you know, working the same way in the mayor's office. And with that said, I know it's been said a couple of times introducing the new staff that I've brought on board. Some of them are new, some of them are old, but they're all familiar faces. So with that said, Mr. Jose Gonzalez here is going to act as the chief administrative officer. He's got a wealth of knowledge in and around Jefferson Parish, in Kenner and the Jefferson Parish Public Works side of the building. So he's a tremendous asset. Ms. Amy Vallow here, it's going to sound like I stole a lot of people from Jefferson Parish government, but I tried to limit, you know, taking all of theirs. But she was the code enforcement director the last, the past several years for Jefferson Parish and did an outstanding job. And she's going to be a deputy CAO. Ms. Natalie Newton, who's also going to be a deputy CAO, who is in that same position here under Mike Yenney several years ago and followed him to Jefferson Parish, and is currently at Discovery Schools here in Kenner as a senior project coordinator, something like that, but she's on a previously scheduled family vacation. I didn't steal this next one from Jefferson Parish because she left, but she was tremendous at Jefferson Parish in her position at running over PMZ. Ms. Catherine Topple, who actually moved here from Indiana to accept this position. So she'll get code enforcement back up and running quickly. So y'all need her phone number. I would get it quickly because we know the phone calls we're getting about code enforcement. Someone that was in planning here that went to Jefferson Parish in that same capacity, I've hired J. A. Bear back as the Assistant Code Enforcement Director. So he's valuable in that office. I stole someone else from Jefferson Parish, but this was the Jefferson Parish Public School System Superintendent spokesperson, Ms. Paris Vanette. She is going to run what we've re-titled Kenner Communications. So she's going to be the director of that. She's got a, she's tremendous in putting words on paper and making me sound like I know what I'm talking about. So she will do good there. Brought back Mr. Eric Munn as the Deputy City Attorney. He was in that position, you know, a while back when let go, but he does an excellent job. And being at JLSA, Natalie does such a wonderful job in her, you know, stole her sister Dana Fink from code, and she's going to be the mayor's executive assistant. So hopefully she can do the same job you do. I'm confident, but we'll see. And Ms. Tracy Bro is going to be the deputy CAO's executive assistant, and she's coming out of Councilman Segura's office. That's where she's been the last couple of years. And an old face in and around Kenner IT is Jay Sprague. He's been with the parish the last couple of years. So he's gone back to the IT director position that he held here several years ago. So I think that's a pretty solid team that will get Kenner moving back in the right direction. And my only comment to them is I don't want to hear yes every time I come up with an idea or make a statement, you know, because that's kind of where we ended up the last couple of years, you know, headed in the wrong direction. So we can argue a lot, but it's for the better of the citizens of Kenner. So with that said, you know, this building has been a hot topic. So what I've done Tuesday is we toured all the city facilities, the office buildings, and found out exactly what was reported by engineers and appraisers. So we know that Building C is immediately habitable today. It's absolutely filthy, so we had it cleaned, I believe, last week. Mark Lorio started the cleaning process of it. Yesterday, we emptied a lot of office furniture to get the floors cleaned. And it'll be, it'll probably, it'll be back in commerce next week. So and the departments that'll end up back in that Building C, which is the old police department, is IT, personnel, civil service, insurance, the city attorney's office, and the Kenner Communications Office, which is currently, you know, Kenner Media. Building A and B does have significant damage. They don't meet current code, even if it was, if we went in and repaired it. We do know that there was a, everybody agrees that they were in bad shape because if you dump a lot of money in it, into it, a similar storm would cause the same damage. So that's something that we will have to consider in the next couple of days or next week, a plan to go, what are we going to do with A and B? I know we're going into an executive session in a minute. Y'all get updated on the process of the insurance payments back to us, and then we'll make the decisions. The mayor's office will be in Building D, the second floor of the EOC on Reverend Richard Wilson Drive. It's the best, most accessible, you know, office for the citizens to get to the mayor's office. Now, it doesn't work where it's at in the public works yard because it's behind locked gates that you have to be buzzed in. It's just, there's nothing convenient about it. So we'll begin that process once everybody gets out of the offices there now and move back into Building C. So that should be within the next two weeks. I'm not putting a pressure on you, Mark, but two weeks is a long time. The public works will be moving back in the trailers in their yard, which is, only makes sense because they're in and around all their equipment. Like, once you're in these office, in these trailers, in these offices, in these trailers, you don't know you're in a trailer. They're actually very nice. You know, Plackaman's Parish used them for years as a courthouse. It suited them well, and it'll suit public works well until we, you know, come up with a final plan of what we're doing with all these city buildings. We identified two gyms that are immediately available or open. The only thing wrong with them is they took the courts up, the sport courts, packed them in a corner. The company that has the sport court said it would be a challenge to relay them, the striped courts, and get them back. So we have a plan. I'm probably going to task a lot of student help that need service hours in high school to put this jigsaw puzzle back together. But in the meantime, Musburgerlino has an unstriped sport court that's laid, and Susan Park will have one in the process now of laying it. It should be back in commerce or back in use relatively quickly. So we'll have a gym on the north side and a gym on the south side that we can actually open and, you know, use. Then we'll work on the ones at the stripes and try to get them, you know, the puzzle put back together, and then we can, we can open more gyms quickly. Because as a police chief, you know, my comment is kids in the gym are a lot better off than kids in the street. So that's kind of the mindset what I have. And to end with, yes, the mayor, the city of Kenner is having a memorial this Saturday for the Pan Am crash, Saturday at 10:00 AM at Our Lady of Perpetual Help Church. It's going to be a program they have, like, this is requested by many, many family members, which y'all probably didn't realize is there's family members that come every year from as far away as Australia. And they come, they have lunch, they visit the memorial that's actually onsite at the church. And being that it's the fortieth anniversary, they've requested something a little more formal. So we'll start that at 10 o'clock, and the public's invited. And this hopefully is the longest mayor's comments that I'll do. No, and she wants me to acknowledge the directors that have been retained. They were retained for a reason because they probably do a good job and were just put in a bad situation. And we know, pretty much all of y'all know exactly who we're talking about, the majority of them. I think it's refreshing just to let you know that the smiles on their faces just walking around the offices that, you know, it's a little different than the way it was before. They had a management style that I don't think worked, you know, we'll change it, and, you know, this one, I'm confident, will work. And that's it.
Thank you, Mayor Glazer.
Thank you all again very much.
I just want to comment, and I know Councilman Branigan also has a comment. Just thank you for, you know, introducing us to your staff, and we look forward to working with you. I've already seen a difference in communication just this week. So I look forward to working with you and having success going forward, so.
Thank you, and I was not going to do it, but I guess it's, you know, I like humor better than anything. I can't make any promises with this police department.
I got a lot of work to do from what he left behind.
Councilman Branigan?
I just want to thank Mayor Glazer for running in this race. I believe that, like I said at the inauguration, this council, these seven people up here and those two elected officials, Mayor Glazer and Chief Conley, will work seamlessly together, and I look forward to the next four years.
Councilman Wilmot?
And I want to ditto that, and I also want to welcome aboard all those directors and assistant directors and the deputy CAO who's here and the one who's coming shortly. And also, it's nice to have Eric Munn back. Thank you very much for returning, and of course, and we have a new police chief as well. And Mayor Glazer, I'm looking forward to the next four years serving with you, sir. In this council, we have several members on this council that are new, and we have some returning. Thank you for stepping up to the plate and running and achieving those goals and coming here and helping. I think it's going to be a great team effort by all these people. So I look forward to serving for the next four years with y'all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Wilmot. Councilman Lahatt?
I also want to recognize the assistants who are new to the council members. Mine, Stephanie King, you stand up. Where you at, Stephanie? In the back. When people call the district offices, a lot of times they get the assistants, you know, as well as us, and they get a formal relationship with them. So my district three is going to have Stephanie King, who's new. She was in the Driftwood Civic Association with me. Very excited about working and helping Kenner get back to where it needs to be. So you can call her, you can call me. We're both looking forward to helping everybody in my district.
Councilwoman Dunn?
Yes, I too have my assistant here, Vivian Hurtado. And since I've had her, I keep saying she's bilingual. So we won't have that problem because in the district that I represent, we have a lot of Hispanics, so we need to work with our counterparts. And I felt like she fit that position better, as I said to my constituents. You elected me to do a job, and that's what I intend to do. Thank you.
Councilman Schworth?
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, you know I've always supported you way back in February, and I'll continue to support you all the way. You're a natural leader out there. You led the police force. I know you're going to lead the city, and we're going to be looking for outstanding things from July 1st for the next eight years, without a doubt. My system would be Darrelln Dozat, which is coming from District Three. She knows the ropes, so she can handle me with no problem. We'll get that done. And again, with my colleagues up here, I sure appreciate their open arms when I first came up here and welcoming me to the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Madam Chairman, we've received a request to change the order of business to take Item 18A at the beginning of the meeting. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Brennan, to change the order of business. Councilmembers, please vote. Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yea.
Wilmot?
Yea.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schworth?
Yes.
Lahatt?
Yea.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 18A, at the request of the administration in an executive session regarding, number one, the city of Kenner versus Lloyds et al., number 828-749C, in the 24th Judicial District Court, Jefferson Parish. Number two is the city of Kenner versus Lloyd et al., number 21-CV-02064, Eastern District of Louisiana. Item three is the city of Kenner versus Lloyd et al., number 827-828F, in the 24th Judicial District Court, Jefferson Parish. I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot, to adjourn into executive session. Councilmembers, please vote. Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yea.
Wilmot?
Yea.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schworth?
Yes.
Lahatt?
Yea.
Branigan?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Councilmember will now adjourn into executive session.
And for the members of the public, we'll try to be as fast as possible. Thanks.
I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot, to reconvene from an executive session. Councilmembers, please vote. Councilman McKenney?
Yea.
Wilmot?
Yea.
Dunn? Schworth?
Yes.
Lahatt?
Yes.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Under the consent agenda, I have item one, approval of minutes, the regular council meeting of June 24, 2022. Item two is approval of alcoholic beverage permit applications. Item 2A is a resolution granting an alcoholic beverage permit to Friends of Rivertown Incorporated on July 30, 2022, at 2015 Fourth Street, being a property owned by the city of Kenner in Kenner, Louisiana. That will conclude the consent agenda. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember McKenney, on the consent. Councilmembers, please vote. Councilman Wilmot?
Yea.
Dunn? Schworth?
Yes.
Lahatt?
Yea.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yea.
Motion passes seven zero. Under the public appearance agenda, we have item eight, public hearings and final passage. Item 8A is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number 12,877, in orders amending the 2021, 2022 operating in capital budgets to fund two part-time recreation department employees to assist at Musburgerlino Playground, and amending ordinance number 7549. Madam Chairman, I've received a request to indefinitely defer this item. I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney, for an indefinite deferral.
Councilmember Branigan?
Yes, this piece of legislation came out in June of last year, and we have deferred it many times in the last year. It has never been about hiring two more employees for the Musburgerlino to oversee the track and all of that foolishness. Basically, it was kept on the, kept alive because it is a piece of legislation that would open the city budget up in case we had to do any type of defunding of anything in the city budget. This was the vehicle that we could have used. I'm happy to say it. I don't think we'll need this anymore, and it runs out based on the last budget year. So that's why it's being indefinitely deferred. Thank you.
Yes, and I just want to reiterate that, you know, we were fully in support of Councilman Branigan. We needed to have, the last administration, we needed to have a vehicle to ensure that we could amend the budget. And this was the vehicle that we felt was, you know, to consistently keep that on the agenda moving forward, gave us that ability as a council to do what we needed to do in order to be successful. So I am in favor of the indefinite deferral, but understand why we kept it on there. So, thank you.
Councilmembers, please vote. Councilman Dunn? Councilman Schworth?
Yes.
Lahatt?
Yea.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yea.
Wilmot?
Yea.
Motion passes seven zero. Item nine is ordinances for the sale, purchase, transfer, lease, and alienation of removable property. We have none. Item 10 is open bids. We have none. Item 11 is reclassification of zoning for final passage. We have none. Item 12 is other ordinances for final passage. We have none. Item 13 is resolutions and motions by council members. These items were taken at an earlier juncture in the meeting. Item 14 is items removed from the consent agenda. We have none. Item 15 is acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item 15A is summary ordinance number 12,982, in order to approve an amendment number two to the Cooperative Endeavor Agreement with South Central Planning and Development Commission Incorporated for residential and commercial building, electrical, plumbing, and mechanical inspections within the city of Kenner to increase the agreement amount by an additional $100,000 and to extend the current term to September 30, 2022.
Motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Lahatt?
Madam Chairman, we've received a request to amend this item. Councilman Wilmot has requested that we delete Section Two from the legislation. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember McKenney, on the amendment.
Any discussion?
I just.
Councilmember Wilmot?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, as far as this language, it's, what it does, it's saying, it's confusing the way it states it. It says may be approved by ordinance. I don't know the need for that. I talked to the attorney, Eric Munn, for the meeting, I talked to the attorney, Eric Munn, for the meeting, and he said that he didn't see any reason why we needed it and we could strike it. And that's what this does.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Branigan?
Not on the amendment.
Oh, not on the amendment. Any other discussion on the amendment?
No.
No. Okay.
Councilmembers, please vote on the amendment. Councilman Swarth?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Wilma?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. On your amendment, back to your original motion as amended.
Councilwoman Wilmont?
Yeah, I have another amendment to offer. The amount on here indicates an additional $100,000. I would like to reduce that to $50,000. I don't think we have a need for the $100 at this point in time, unless the administration has any issues with that.
If you could just introduce yourself. Thank you.
Catherine Topple, Director of Inspection and Code Enforcement for the City of Kennesaw. We have a couple of outstanding invoices for this particular contract. That is the less than $50,000. I am concerned if there are any other outstanding, though, from June prior to the current administration. We do not intend on continuing with this contract and using this anymore, but I would be concerned about the $50,000 if that would be enough to process anything coming in from June. This covers April and May of 2022 only, and it does not cover June.
So you feel it's necessary to keep it at $100?
I prefer keeping it $100 just to be safe, however you have our commitment that we are no longer using them.
Okay. And having heard that, then I withdraw that amendment or request.
And what were the amounts for?
The amounts?
Yes, for April and May, respectively.
April, there were 327 inspections performed, and that invoice is $24,525. May, there were 72 inspections performed, and that invoice is $5,400. And we have not received anything for June. I'm not certain if they performed any inspections for June. We just wanted to have that just in case we did receive that outstanding invoice for June.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Branigan, how's this handled?
Oh, Councilwoman Branigan, sorry.
I am very happy to hear that the current administration will not be using this contract again. Basically, and we have paid out $240,000 since July 1st. In addition to that, when you look at...
July 1st of last year?
Of 2021. We paid out, it's going to be with these payments, $240,000 for these inspections. And we also paid out $90,000 for Solution Corporation that ran from July 1st of '21 to 6/30 of '22, but that contract was exhausted on December 21, 2021. So we paid 240, we paid 90, and then the prior interim code directive, Ms. Wilken, was paid $99,000 from December 20, 2021, to April 30, 2022. We spent $429,000 in the Code Department, and I think that is ridiculous. So I am very happy to hear that y'all are getting rid of this.
Yes, we are bringing it in-house where it should be.
That is music to my ears.
Councilmember Lahat?
Ms. Topple, I know you're very new as of yesterday, but I know building code has been one of my top issues I've heard about from my constituents and the lack of enforcement and procedural issues. Can you explain? I'm new, and I'm going to ask questions as I go so I understand everything completely 100%. What did this company do, if anything, from your review? I know you've been here two days, but I want to understand what we've been paying for, if anything, and what your current criticisms are of that, and what you're planning on doing once you bring it in-house.
Aren't we on the amendment?
From my... Sorry. Yeah, we're just on the amendment.
Yes, we're on the... We're just focusing on the amendment right now.
Okay, that's number one mistake, sorry.
The first amendment, the first amendment was approved, the second amendment has been removed. He removed his motion.
Okay.
Yes, so actually, you can ask your question.
Just read back my question. Same question.
So, okay. From what, from my review of this, is they were providing inspections for mainly IDA repairs, Hurricane IDA repairs. In addition, they did assist with some plan review. While it was very limited, however, because the paperwork, processing the paperwork to give to them to help with plan review, assist in that review, was well over an hour per item. The majority of their work was actually making the inspections out in the field for those damages from Hurricane IDA with permits issued. Now, our intent is to bring this in-house. We have open positions right now that are budgeted, that we are going to be filling rather quickly, and we intend on using those positions to make these inspections out in the field at a much less cost to the citizens.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Just a point of clarification. Councilwoman Wilmont has removed his motion to change the amount, so the amount will remain at $100,000. The only amendment that was approved was to delete Section 2. We are back at your original motion as amended. Your motion was Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Lahat. Seeing no further discussion, councilmembers, please vote. Councilwoman Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Wilma?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Swarth?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Item 15B is summary ordinance number 12,983, in order to accept on the lowest response bid received from Risk Tree Service LLC to provide tree work on an as-needed basis in accordance with seal bid number 22-6658, in an amount not to exceed $300,000 annually for the Department of Field Services.
Motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Swarth. Any comments, questions?
Yes, ma'am. I have an amendment to put on the floor, please. We've received an amendment to delete Section 3 from this ordinance, which would be a motion by Councilmember Wilmont, seconded by Councilmember McKenney, to amend.
Discussion on the amendment?
Again, yeah.
Councilmember Wilmont?
Again, it does the same thing. They have a clause in there, it says "approved by resolution." We're removing that clause by removing Section 3. That way, it has to come for a full hearing by the council, as opposed to doing it by resolution.
And any comments? Yes, if you could state your name and your district.
Richard Brown, 824 Sessions, Lane in District 4. I think Mr. Councilman Wilmont just brought up the issue that concerned me. This is the first of many items on tonight's agenda which contain that phrase or that clause that says future amendments can be made by resolution rather than by ordinance. And as y'all recall, I objected to that at the last meeting, and you removed that from several ordinances. I appreciate Councilman Wilmont removing it from this one, and it's on a whole bunch of others on tonight's agenda. That's all. Thank you.
Yes, and just in response to that, we do have that for every item, that is, we will be amending those future ones, items as well.
Good, thank you. I can stay seated. Thank you.
Any other...
On the amendment?
Any other questions? Councilmembers, please vote.
On the amendment?
Yes.
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Wilma?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Swarth?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Motion passes 7-0.
Councilwoman Wilmont?
Thank you, Madam President. I do have another amendment, a second amendment, where we would be creasing the annual amount from $300,000 to $150,000. I understand that $150 is allowable at this time. Anything beyond that, they would have to return to the council for additional authority. Spoke to Mr. Melvin, and Pete has no problem with it.
I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmont, seconded by Councilmember McKenney, to change the amount from $300,000 to $150,000. Any discussion on that amendment?
Councilwoman Branigan?
No, I have a comment about the legislation.
Okay. I do just have a question for the CFO. What is the previous amount? I know last year was not a normal year in terms of considering IDA, but what was in the past, what was the amount that has been charged by Risk?
So we're moving like IDA, we've spent about $330,000 over the course of the two years, so $330 for two years, $150 is reasonable.
So $150 is reasonable? Okay, perfect, thank you. Okay, councilmembers, please vote on the second amendment.
Councilwoman Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Wilma?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Swarth?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Back to your original motion as amended.
Councilmembers, please vote. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Branigan?
The only question I had, I brought this up at the last council meeting, when you look at the bid, that was the tally for the bids, Risk Tree Service won the bid by about $600, is $54,000. And when you come in and you're setting a not to exceed by $300,000, but the bid was 54, I don't understand why they would have that big of a difference between what the actual bid was and what the not to exceed is.
Yes, CFO, hearing.
So typically, we use quantities during the bid process just to get us to a certain amount. Obviously, it depends on how many trees need to be trimmed, what happens, and stuff like that. So we just try to pick a not to exceed, doesn't mean we're going to spend it. It's similar to if we bid out, you know, 100 paper clips and we only need 50, you know. We just use a number to try to get just a total not to exceed amount, so that's why, I mean, that's basically what it is. The quantities vary, depends what tree, you know, needs to be trimmed.
Okay, yeah, and that's fine, because when you look at the bid amount and you say, if it's an 8-inch size limb, it's so much.
Correct.
If it's a 4-inch size limb, it's so much. So basically, in order to get an apples-to-apples comparison in bid, I understand that. I feel much more comfortable at $150,000, especially since we were pretty close to that number. So I think that's, with these amendments, it's a good move.
Yes, and I also, just to piggyback on that, I also have more confidence in the administration to track those costs and be reasonable in their selection of that. So, councilmembers, please vote on 15B as amended.
Councilwoman McKenney?
Yay.
Wilma?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Swarth?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Item 15C is summary ordinance number 12,985, in order to accept on the lowest response bid received from Lytel Enterprises of Ohio LLC to supply signposts, brackets, and miscellaneous sign supplies as needed in accordance with seal bid number 22-6661, in an amount not to exceed $40,000 for the Department of General Services.
Motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Wilmont.
Madam Chairman, I've received a request to amend this item as well, to delete Section 3. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmont, seconded by Councilmember McKenney, on the amendment.
And it's the same logic, this is to be approved by resolution, and we're striking that clause.
Thank you. Any additional? Motion by...
Councilwoman Wilmont, seconded by McKenney.
Motion by Councilmember Wilmont, seconded by McKenney. Councilmembers, please vote.
Councilwoman Wilmont?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Swarth?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 to amend Item 15C. Back to your original motion. Councilmembers, please vote. Councilman Dunn?
Yes.
Swarth?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Wilma?
Yay.
Motion passes 7-0. Item 15D is summary ordinance number 12,986, in order to accept on the lowest response bid received from Universal Signs and Accessories to supply aluminum, sheet, and sign blanks as needed in accordance with seal bid number 22-6662, in an amount not to exceed $40,000 for the Department of General Services.
Motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember Branigan.
Madam Chairman, I've also received a request to amend this item to delete Section 3. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmont, seconded by McKenney, to amend.
Councilmember Wilmont?
Yes, and again, it's the same, it's regarding the approval by resolution, and we're striking that.
Motion by council amendment, amendment, motion by Councilmember Wilmont, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. Councilmembers, please vote.
Councilman Swarth?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yes.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Wilma?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 to amend.
Motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember Branigan, as amended. Councilmembers, please vote. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Lahat?
Is this, are these an annual type of deals? Is this something the new budget started, and now we're getting, you know, aluminum sheet signs for obviously the Department of General Services, this is an as-needed basis? Or is this something we renew every year?
This is a renewal, this is a renewal every year we put it out.
Okay.
It's an annual contract.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Gloria. So, this, just clarifying question for CFO, the CFO, what is the past amount that we spent annually?
We've spent about $3,000 last year on this. Obviously, I think we had some stock on hand, so we didn't have to buy as much, but that contract ended in June.
Okay, thank you. Motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember Branigan. Councilmembers, please vote as amended.
Councilwoman Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yes.
Wilma?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Swarth?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Item 15E is summary ordinance number 12,987, in order to approve an amendment number 1 to the agreement with MSMM Engineering LLC for various engineering and architectural services to increase the not to exceed amount by $50,000 for the Department of Public Works.
Motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Dunn.
Madam Chairman, we've also received a request to amend this item to delete Section 3. Motion by Councilmember Wilmont, seconded by Councilmember McKenney, on the amendment.
Councilwoman Wilmont?
Thank you, Madam President. Again, it's the same thing, it's the approval by a resolution, we're removing that, and it's Section 3. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion by Councilmember Wilmont, seconded by Councilmember McKenney, vote on the amendment. councilmembers please vote.
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Wilmont?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schworth?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Motion passes seven zero for the amendment.
Motion by councilmember Brennan, seconded by councilmember Dunn, any questions on this item? Councilmembers please vote.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Wilmont?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schworth?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 15F is summary ordinance number 12,988, an ordinance approving an engineering agreement with MSMM Engineering LLC to provide professional engineering services associated with the wastewater treatment plant number three, WWTP number three, clarifiers one through four, rehabilitation project for the amount not to exceed $358,262 for the Department of Public Works.
Motion by councilmember McKenney, seconded by councilmember Brennan.
Madam Chairman, we've received a request to amend this item as well to delete Section 2.
Councilmember Wilmont, on the amendment?
I have a motion by councilmember Wilmont, seconded by councilmember McKenney on the amendment.
And again, this is to strike as language approved by resolution in Section 2.
Any other comments?
No.
Motion, motion by Wilmont, councilmember Wilmont, seconded by councilmember McKenney on the amendment, councilmembers please vote.
McKenney?
Yay.
Wilmont?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schworth?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Back to your original motion as amended.
Motion by councilmember McKenney, seconded by councilmember Brennan, I actually have a question on that, can, do we have anyone that can explain the work that is being done, and why, why it needs to be extended? Or why?
I'm gonna say something briefly, but I'm gonna let Joanne come up and discuss. All we're doing with this item is replacing four clarifiers at the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay.
Four clarifiers out of six that are not currently working at all, so the capacity of that station has been reduced considerably. So all we're doing is design to replace four out of six clarifiers.
Okay, thank you, thank you CIO.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yes. Oh, yeah, so clever, thank you Joanne. Okay, motion by councilmember McKenney, seconded by councilmember Brennan, as amended, councilmembers please vote.
Councilmember Wilmont?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schworth?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 15G is summary ordinance number 12,989, an ordinance approving an engineering agreement with Shred and Kirkendall and Associates Incorporated to provide professional engineering services associated with the Chateau Transfer Station Improvements Project for the amount not to exceed $312,984 for the Department of Public Works.
There's been a request for one meeting deferral, motion by councilmember Branigan, seconded by councilmember Wilmont.
Excuse me?
Yes, councilmember Wilmont.
Madam President, I'd like to go ahead and put the same amendment on this before we defer it, if we may?
Yes, sir.
If I may ma'am, we have a motion by councilmember Branigan, seconded by Wilmont for approval, and now we can put the amendment on the floor.
And that's by councilmember Wilmont, and seconded by councilmember McKenney, correct?
Yes, on the amendment.
Yes.
To delete Section 3.
A section, this is 15G, we're removing Section 2.
2?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, no problem, delete Section 2.
Okay, motion by councilmember Wilmont, and seconded by councilmember McKenney for the amendment on Section 2, councilmembers please vote.
Councilman Dunn?
Yes.
Schworth?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Wilmont?
Yay.
Motion passes seven zero to amend.
Request, so, request, let's go back to the original amendment, as amended, request for a one-meeting deferral, motion by councilmember Branigan, seconded by councilmember Wilmont, councilmember Branigan?
The reason we're having a one-meeting deferral is we have a meeting next week on this project, and we need to make sure everything is done proper on this, so that's why we are deferring it for one meeting.
Thank you, councilmember Branigan, any other comments? Request for one-meeting deferral, motion by councilmember Branigan, seconded by councilmember Wilmont, councilmembers please vote.
Councilman Schworth?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yes.
Wilmont?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 15H is summary ordinance number 13,014, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from One Diversified LLC for the purchase of four SDI/HDMI PTZ cameras, and an amount not to exceed $12,580 in accordance with telephone/fax bid number 22-2866 for the Department of Kenner Media.
Motion by councilmember Wilmont, seconded by councilmember McKenney, councilmember Branigan?
Yeah, I have a question about these cameras, can someone from Kenner Media come up?
If you can introduce yourself formally to all of us, and respond to that question.
Good evening, I'm Paris Vanette, the Director of Communications.
Yes, and then answer, councilmember Branigan's question?
So these are four cameras that were damaged during Hurricane Ida, they were in Building A and were installed in the ceiling, and so these are just to replace those four cameras. These newer cameras are now allow for mobility, so in the event that we experience inclement weather in the future, this will not happen again, as we'll be able to move them.
Okay, that's good, I was just wondering if these cameras were, you know, like Walmart has gone from having cashiers to self-checkout, if we were gonna have cameras that were self-filming cameras in the department?
I do know that these cameras are able to pan, tilt, and zoom, so I can get back with you on those capabilities, but that's what I know as of now, so.
You don't have to get back, I'm just...
I figured, but I wanted to make sure I was accountable.
It was your first time up here coming to the mic, so...
Thanks, how did you know, I'm just kidding.
Thank you.
You communicated well, good job. Motion by councilmember, wait, let's see, I'm on the right one, yes, motion by councilmember Wilmont, seconded by councilmember McKenney, councilmembers please vote.
Councilmember Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Wilmont?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schworth?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 15I is summary ordinance number 13,015, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from All-Star Electric Incorporated to provide I-10 street lighting repairs and maintenance on an as-needed basis, in accordance with sealed bid number 22-6675, and an amount not to exceed $150,000 annually for the Department of Field Services.
Motion by councilmember Dunn, seconded by councilmember Brennan.
Madam Chairman, we've received a request also for this item to delete Section 3. Motion by councilmember Wilmont, seconded by McKenney to amend.
Any discussion, councilmember Wilmont?
Thank you, Madam President, it's the same reasoning, it has, and here's some language approved by resolution, and we're gonna strike that.
Thank you, councilmember Wilmont. Motion by councilmember Wilmont, seconded by councilmember McKenney on amendment, councilmembers please vote.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Wilmont?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schworth?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Motion passes seven zero. Back to your original motion.
Yes, motion by councilmember Dunn, seconded by councilmember Brennan, councilman Schworth?
Yes, I've been schooled by Mr. Kenny over here on lighting, it's lighting on Interstate 10, most people would think like, why is the city of Kenner paying for the repairs or lights and replacing light bulbs on the interstate? Well, it comes to the point that the state nor the federal has anything to do with the lighting on the interstate. The parishes and the cities absorb all the repair costs, and anything like that with the lighting on those fairways. So, with all that, I want my constituents and my also friends and all to know that we'll have to incur this cost here to repair and to replace the lights on the interstate.
Thank you, thank you councilman.
And can I?
Yes.
Can I say something? It's $150,000 this year, but it will probably increase next year with the flyovers, because when the flyovers are up and running, we'll have a lot more streetlights that we're responsible for, because apparently, like you said, the federal government doesn't believe in streetlighting, so.
Well, hopefully those lights will work for at least a year.
So, when you ask what's different, next year when you ask what's different, it's gonna go up, that's because we added a lot more streetlights.
Thank you, Matt Glazer. Motion by councilmember Dunn, seconded by councilmember Brennan, on the amended, on the, as amended, councilmembers please vote.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yes.
Wilmont?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schworth?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 15J is summary ordinance number 13,016, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Atacapa Services LLC to provide cleaning and flushing of subsurface drain lines and drainage structures on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid number 22-6677, and an amount not to exceed $150,000 annually for the Department of Field Services.
Motion by councilmember Lahat, seconded by councilmember Schworth.
Madam Chairman, we've received a request also to delete Section 3 from this legislation. Motion by councilmember Wilmont, seconded by McKenney for the amendment.
Discussion, councilmember Wilmont?
It's the same amendment, Madam Chairman, it's Section 3 we're striking, because it says approved by resolution.
Thank you. As, we're voting on the amendment, motion by councilmember Wilmont, seconded by councilmember McKenney, councilmembers please vote.
Councilmember McKenney?
Yay.
Wilmont?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schworth?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yes.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Motion by councilmember Lahat, seconded by councilmember Schworth, council, and on as amended, councilmember please vote.
Councilmember Wilmont?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schworth?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 15K is summary ordinance number 13,017, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Coburn Supply Company Incorporated to supply frames and grates in accordance with sealed bid number 22-6674, and an amount not to exceed $15,000 annually for the Department of Field Services.
Motion by councilmember Schworth, seconded by councilmember Brennan, we have amendment?
Yes, ma'am, we will be, amendment to delete Section 3.
Which is, motion by councilmember Wilmont, seconded by councilmember McKenney, any discussion, councilmember Wilmont?
Again, it's the same.
Okay, thank you, any discussion? Motion by councilmember Wilmont, seconded by councilmember McKenney, councilmember, please vote on the amendment.
Councilman Dunn?
Yes.
Schworth?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Wilmont?
Yay.
Motion passes seven zero.
Motion by councilmember Schworth, seconded by councilmember Brennan, any questions, councilmembers please vote.
Councilman Schworth?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Wilmont?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 15L is summary ordinance number 13,018, an ordinance approving an agreement with Crow and Associates Incorporated to provide ditch spraying services on an as-needed basis in accordance with RFP 22-6652, and an amount not to exceed $20,000 annually for the Department of Field Services.
Motion by councilmember Brennan, seconded by councilmember Lahat, we have an amendment?
Yes, we do, we will be deleting Section 3.
It's the same, Madam President.
Thank you, vote on the amendment, motion by councilmember Wilmont, seconded by councilmember McKenney, councilmembers please vote.
Councilmember Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Wilmont?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schworth?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Voting on it as amended by, motion by councilmember Brennan, seconded by councilmember Lahat, councilmembers please vote.
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yes.
Wilmont?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schworth?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 15M is summary ordinance number 13,019, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Fleming Construction Company LLC to provide concrete street maintenance and small jobs on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid number 22-6655, and an amount not to exceed $1,400 annually for the Department of Field Services.
Motion by councilmember McKenney, seconded by councilmember Dunn, we have an amendment?
Yes, we will be deleting Section 3.
Motion by councilmember Wilmont, seconded by councilmember McKenney, any discussion?
The same, Madam President.
Yes. Councilmember Brennan?
Would you just clarify the amount, Council, it sounded different than it reads.
1,400,000?
Thank you, it just sounded a little different to me.
Okay, sorry, all right?
Don't be sorry, thank you.
Motion by councilmember Wilmont, seconded by councilmember McKenney on the amendment, councilmembers please vote.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Wilmont?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schworth?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Motion by councilmember McKenney, seconded by councilmember Dunn, any discussion, councilmember Lahat?
Yes, another newbie question, can someone explain to me the small jobs versus what a large job would be, for what Fleming Construction would do, as opposed to what, I mean, any of our in-house team would do, I just want someone here that can explain that to me?
I will definitely try.
Sorry.
When you're dealing with concrete, concrete can be very expensive, okay, that's why you have a cap of $1.4 million, you know, a small job could be, you know, one panel versus a replacement of five or six panels, when, when you get a blowout out there due to excessive heat, normally we have to replace three or four panels, okay? And so, it's the difference in quantities, okay? Small jobs is just limited to maybe one panel, some sidewalk replacement, a small sections of sidewalk, driveway aprons, to deal with any utility-related problems. With this, this big cap, we're talking about a number of panels, and because of our soil conditions, especially in North Kenner, we do need a lot of work, you know, to repair streets, and that work can be very costly.
And this would apply to someone who has a, like a drain that's sunken in on a street in front of their property, this would apply to that type of job?
Yes, if the drain, yeah, if the drain is causing a problem due to an open joint or whatever, that is generating a problem with the concrete roadway as far as cracks and so on, yes, this contract would address that.
Thank you so much.
I have a question.
Councilmember Dunn?
Yes, only on ass, this is just for concrete only?
Yes, ma'am.
Not asphalt? They don't do the asphalt, okay.
I have a question for CFO Haring, what is the amount that we, of the previous contract?
The previous was for 1.4 as well, we've spent about $450,000, a little over $450,000.
Okay, thank you. Yes, councilmember Branigan?
We spent $450,000?
Correct.
I've got 21 street panels I need replaced.
You got the money.
That's not a small job, that's a large job. Okay, motion by, um... Motion by councilmember McKenney, seconded by councilmember Dunn, councilmembers please vote.
Councilman McKenney?
Yay.
Wilmont?
Yay.
Dunn? Dunn?
Yes.
Schwort?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen N is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand twenty. An ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Nodico Industries LLC to supply electrical supplies on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid number twenty-two dash sixty-six seventy-six and an amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars annually for the Department of Field Services.
Motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember Wilmont. We also have an amendment to section three as well.
Yes, we will be deleting section three.
Councilmember Wilmont?
It's the same reasons, Madam President.
Thank you. Uh, motion by Councilmember Wilmont, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. Councilmembers, please vote on the amendment.
Councilwoman Wilmont?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schwort?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Motion passes seven zero.
Motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember Wilmont. Any questions? No. Councilmembers, please vote.
Councilman Dunn?
Yes.
Schwort?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Wilmont?
Yay.
Motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen O is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand twenty-one. An ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Ram J Construction LLC to provide drainage maintenance on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid number twenty-two dash sixty-six seventy and an amount not to exceed six hundred thousand dollars annually for the Department of Field Services.
Motion by Councilmember Schwort, seconded by Councilmember Branigan. We have an amendment to section three as well?
Yes, to delete section three.
To delete section three. Motion by Council to the amendment, motion by Councilmember Wilmont, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. Councilmembers, please vote on the amendment.
Councilwoman Schwort?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Wilmont?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Vote on the fifteen O as amended, motion by Councilmember Schwort, seconded by Councilmember Branigan. Councilmembers, please vote.
Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Wilmont?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schwort?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen P is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand twenty-two. An ordinance approving an agreement with W.J. Blocher Company LLC to provide professional services, labor only, for fixtures, lamps, and wiring on an as-needed basis in accordance with RFP twenty-two dash sixty-six fifty-three and an amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars annually for the Department of Field Services.
Motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Lahat. We have an amendment for section three. Motion by Councilmember Wilmont, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. Vote. Councilmembers, please vote on amendment.
And that's, Madam President, that's to remove section three.
Yes, to remove section three, I apologize.
Yes, thank you.
Councilmembers, please vote.
Madam Chairman, I just wanted to clarify.
Oh.
Okay, no problem. Councilmembers, please vote on the amendment. Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Wilmont?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schwort?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Wilmont?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Vote on the fifteen O as amended, motion by Councilmember Schwort, seconded by Councilmember Branigan. Councilmembers, please vote.
Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Wilmont?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schwort?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Wilmont?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schwort?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Wilmont?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schwort?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Wilmont?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schwort?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Wilmont?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schwort?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Wilmont?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Vote on the fifteen O as amended, motion by Councilmember Schwort, seconded by Councilmember Branigan. Councilmembers, please vote.
Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Wilmont?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schwort?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen R is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand twenty-four. An ordinance approving an agreement with J. Chen's Plumbing Repairs LLC to provide plumbing services, labor only, in accordance with RFP twenty-two dash sixty-six seventy-two not to exceed an amount of a hundred thousand dollars for the Department of General Services.
Motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Schwort. We have an amendment to remove section three. Motion by Councilmember Wilmont, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. Vote. Councilmembers, please vote on amendment.
And that's, Madam President, that's to remove section three.
Yes, to remove section three, I apologize.
Yes, thank you.
Councilmembers, please vote.
Madam Chairman, I just wanted to clarify.
Oh.
Okay, no problem. Councilmembers, please vote on the amendment. Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Wilmont?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schwort?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Voting on it as amended, motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Schwort. Second, councilmembers, please vote unless we have any questions. Yes, as amended.
Councilwoman Wilmont?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schwort?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Wilmont?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Voting on it as amended, motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Schwort. Second, councilmembers, please vote unless we have any questions. Yes, as amended.
Councilwoman Wilmont?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schwort?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Wilmont?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schwort?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Wilmont?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schwort?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Wilmont?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schwort?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Item fifteen T is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand twenty-six. An ordinance approving the use of state contract number four-four-zero-zero-zero-two-zero-five-seven-six with AT&amp;T Corporation to provide cellular wireless service for a cost not to exceed ten thousand dollars annually for the life of the agreement for the Kenner Police Department. Motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Brennan. Councilmembers, Councilmember Branigan, you have a question?
It says monthly. Sure.
What did I say?
Annual.
Annual.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. That would be monthly, clarification.
Does anyone have any other questions? Council, yes, Councilmember Branigan?
Do we have to go up to ten thousand a month because we have a new police chief? Is that what the deal is?
This was put on by the prior...
Because we know he likes to talk a lot.
Actually, every police car has a hotspot in it, so that's pretty much what this is. You know, it's, we have it, it's an annual, and it's pretty much right at ten thousand a month.
Okay.
I'm astonished by cellular phones and gasoline, monthly, gasoline weekly is actually a joke. It's almost that much now.
Thank you, Chief Mayor Glazer. Motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Brennan. Councilmembers, please vote.
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Wilmont?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schwort?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Wilmont?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen S is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand twenty-five. An ordinance authorizing the Department of Finance to pay invoice number one-two-zero-zero-four to Elos Environmental LLC in the amount of forty-six thousand three hundred and thirty-one dollars and not seventy-nine cents.
Motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Wilmont. Any questions? If I...
Yes.
Mayor Glazer?
I have questions also, so Eric Mond will explain.
Attorney Munn?
Turn this on. Good evening. We've got, our office took a look at this when it came up on the agenda. I just, it was, struck us a little odd with it being an invoice to pay as opposed to under contract. So unfortunately, though, we did not have time to go through a very detailed invoice that they had included, and when I checked with finance, they didn't have a initialed approval from a previous administration about approving everything. So we'd like to ask for a deferral on this one to give us time to look at it. I know Elos had several of the contracts out, too, that we were going to take a look at, and...
Two meeting, or one meeting, or two-meeting deferral?
I would take two meetings if they'll give it to me.
Two meetings, good. We'll do two meetings.
I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Branigan, for a two-meeting deferral.
Can we give them four?
No.
Yeah, limits three, I mean, two. Any discussion on the deferral?
Nope.
Seeing none, councilmembers, please vote on a two-meeting deferral. Councilman Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Wilmont?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schwort?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen T is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand twenty-six. An ordinance approving the use of state contract number four-four-zero-zero-zero-two-zero-five-seven-six with AT&amp;T Corporation to provide cellular wireless service for a cost not to exceed ten thousand dollars annually for the life of the agreement for the Kenner Police Department.
Motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Brennan. Councilmembers, Councilmember Branigan, you have a question?
It says monthly. Sure.
What did I say?
Annual.
Annual.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. That would be monthly, clarification.
Does anyone have any other questions? Council, yes, Councilmember Branigan?
Do we have to go up to ten thousand a month because we have a new police chief? Is that what the deal is?
This was put on by the prior...
Because we know he likes to talk a lot.
Actually, every police car has a hotspot in it, so that's pretty much what this is. You know, it's, we have it, it's an annual, and it's pretty much right at ten thousand a month.
Okay.
I'm astonished by cellular phones and gasoline, monthly, gasoline weekly is actually a joke. It's almost that much now.
Thank you, Chief Mayor Glazer. Motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Brennan. Councilmembers, please vote.
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Wilmont?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schwort?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen U is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand twenty-seven. An ordinance approving amendment number seven with ASM Global, formerly known as SMG for Management Services for the Poncharang Convention and Civic Center to extend the agreement through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
Motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. We have an amendment on the floor to remove section three, which is...
Two.
Oh, section two, apologize for that. Motion by Councilmember Wilmont, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. Councilmembers, please vote on the amendment.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Wilmont?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schwort?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero to amend.
Motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. Voting on it as amended, councilmembers, please vote.
Councilmember McKenney?
Yay.
Wilmont?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schwort?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen V is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand twenty-eight. An ordinance accepting the maintenance, the streetlights in Louisiana Trace subdivision.
We have a request for a two-meeting deferral.
Removal.
Oh, actually, we have a request for removal. Motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Lahat. Mayor Glazer, would you like to say anything? No? Okay. Anyone have any questions? No. Councilmembers, please vote. We're voting on to remove fifteen V.
Councilwoman Wilmont?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schwort?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Wilmont?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Motion by Councilmember Wilmont, seconded by Councilmember Dunn. We have an amendment as well, of section, removal of section two by Councilmember Wilmont.
Madam Chairman, if I could clarify real quick.
Yes.
Councilmember Brennan has requested to motion on this item. It's in District Five.
Oh, I apologize. Thank you, Councilman. Motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Dunn.
Section two by Councilmember Wilmot.
Madam Chairman, if I could clarify real quick.
Yes.
Councilmember Brennan has requested to motion on this item. It's in District five.
Oh, I apologize. Thank you, Councilman. Motion by Councilwoman Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Dunn. We're also going to do the amendment, remove the removal of section two. Motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember McKinney. Vote on the amendment.
Councilman Dunn?
Yes.
Schworth?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yes.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yay.
Wilmot?
Yay.
Motion passes seven zero to amend.
Motion by Councilwoman Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Dunn, as amended. Councilmembers, please vote.
Councilman Schworth?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yay.
Wilmot?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen X is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand thirty. An ordinance approving an engineering agreement with Mott McDonald LLC to provide professional engineering services associated with the Forty-third and California Partial Force Main Replacement Project in an amount not to exceed one hundred and eighty-four thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirty-nine cents for the Department of Public Works.
Motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember Dunn. We have an amendment to remove section three or four. Oh, we don't have an amendment?
Yes. We don't have one?
On fifteen?
X. No?
Oh, I'm sorry, on fifteen, yes, we do, section two, I'm sorry.
Section two, so we have a motion. Section four, or we have an amendment for a section, to remove section two.
Correct.
Motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember McKinney. Councilmember, please vote on the amendment.
Councilman Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yay.
Wilmot?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schworth?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember Dunn, as amended. Councilmembers, please vote.
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yay.
Wilmot?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schworth?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen Y is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand thirty-one. An ordinance ratifying the policy and rates for the commercial property insurance for the City of Kenner for the policy year June first, two thousand twenty-two, through May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. In addition to the commercial property insurance policy approved by ordinance number twelve thousand, adopted May twentieth, two thousand twenty-two, which additional coverage is from Lexington Insurance Company and Starstone Specialty Insurance Company for five thousand, five thousand dollars, is that correct?
It should be five million.
Five million dollar coverage and limit of excess wind and hail and all other perils for a premium of two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and seventy-five cents.
Motion by Councilmember Schworth, seconded by Councilmember Branigan. Councilmembers, please vote.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yay.
Wilmot?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schworth?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen Z is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand thirty-two. An ordinance authorizing an agreement with Centrica Business Solutions Services Incorporated to provide performance-based energy efficiency services in accordance with RFP number twenty-two dash sixty-six, sixty-three, and pursuant to LA RS thirty-three colon forty-five, forty-seven point one. Madam Chairman, I've received a request for a one-meeting deferral on this item.
Thank you. Motion, motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember Schworth for the deferral. Councilmember, please vote.
There's someone at the podium.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
No, actually, I guess I'll be speaking on it at the next meeting, if it's being deferred.
Councilmembers, please vote for a one-meeting deferral. Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yay.
Wilmot?
Yay.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schworth?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Branigan?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen A A is a resolution approving amendment number one to the agreement with MSMM Engineering LLC dated April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, regarding Phase Two Lincoln Manor Subdivision Drainage Improvements Project, Facility Planning and Control, FPNC, project number fifty dash MF one dash twenty-one dash zero one, for an increase of eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars for the Department of Public Works.
Motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Schworth. Any comments?
This is-
Councilmember Dunn?
Yeah, this is work that Lincoln Manor really needs as far as they're dealing with the drainage in Lincoln Manor. So, they've already did part of it, so this is actually an extension of going into another phase.
Thank you. Councilmember Dunn? Motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Schworth. Councilmembers, please vote.
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Wilmot?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Schworth?
Yes.
Lahat?
Yay.
Motion passes seven zero. Item sixteen is ordinances and resolutions in summary for first reading. Item sixteen A is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from NOLA Painting and Finishing LLC to furnish and install roofing at six twenty-four Williams Boulevard in accordance with letter bid number twenty-two dash two thousand nine in an amount not, an amount of twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars for the Department of General Services. Item sixteen B is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from NOLA Painting and Finishing LLC to furnish and install roofing for Fire Station Thirty-Five in accordance with letter bid number twenty-two dash twenty-ten in the amount of fifteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-three dollars for the Department of General Services. Item sixteen C is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from NOLA Painting and Finishing LLC to furnish and install roofing for Fire Station Thirty-Six in accordance with letter bid number twenty-two dash two thousand thirteen in the amount of fourteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for the Department of General Services. Item sixteen D is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from NOLA Painting and Finishing LLC to furnish and install roofing at the Rivertown Church located in Rivertown in accordance with letter bid number twenty-two dash twenty-twelve in the amount of twelve thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars for the Department of General Services. Item sixteen E is an ordinance approving a two-year agreement with the Flying Locksmiths of New Orleans to provide locksmith services as needed in accordance with letter bid number twenty-two dash two thousand fourteen in an amount not to exceed twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand dollars annually for the Department of General Services. Item sixteen F is an ordinance ratifying the emergency purchase and installation of three air conditioning systems, two twenty-ton systems and one five-ton system at Wentwood Gym by Beacon Air Conditioning, Heating and Refrigeration Incorporated in the amount of seventy-three thousand dollars. Item sixteen G is an ordinance approving this use of state contract number four four zero 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 one one two four zero and ten-year financing agreement with Axon Enterprise Incorporated for the purchase of the Officer Safety Plan Seven Plus Premium Bundle Package, including all associated hardware, software, peripherals, and applicable training in an amount not to exceed five million, five hundred thousand dollars for the Kenner Police Department. Item sixteen H is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a software-as-a-service subscription bundle from Interview Now, a sole-source provider in the amount of seven thousand dollars for the Kenner Police Department. Item sixteen I is an ordinance approving the use of state contract number four four zero 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 two two seven two eight with Motorola Solutions Incorporated for the purchase of portable radios and accessories for a cost not to exceed six hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars and seventy-five cents for the Kenner Police Department. Item sixteen J is an ordinance approving the use of state contract number four four zero 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 two three three one two with Precision Delta Corporation for the purchase of various types of ammunition on an as-needed basis at a cost not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars annually for the Kenner Police Department. Item sixteen K is an ordinance approving the use of state contract number four four zero 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 two zero five nine three with TCO Safety Incorporated for the purchase of two point-blank Level Three ballistic shields at a cost not to exceed seventeen thousand, eight hundred and three dollars and eighty cents for the Kenner Police Department. Item sixteen L is an ordinance amending ordinance number eleven thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight, adopted April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two, which authorized the utilization of Jefferson Parish Sheriff's Office Contract Twenty-One dash DEC dash fifteen oh one with Lamarck Ford Incorporated and Courtesy Ford to purchase vehicles on an as-needed basis for the Kenner Police Department to change the not-to-exceed amount from five hundred thousand dollars to one million dollars for the life of the agreement. Item seventeen is reports from the council and our special committees.
Councilmember Wilmot?
I'd just like to thank everybody for taking the time and listening to all the amendments that we had tonight. Because they had amendment by resolution, it's language we really didn't need and all those pieces of legislation, we removed them. And I understand that they're not going to be in the future unless they're necessary. So, we felt like they weren't necessary, so thank you for supporting those.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilmot. And I just want to say that tonight, we voted on more items than me and my colleagues voted on the past four years, I think. So, officially, to the new colleagues, you voted, you have as much experience as we do now. So, don't ask any more questions, I'm just kidding. Just kidding, but yes, that was a lot of voting there. So, Councilmember Branigan?
I just want to thank the administration for giving us straight answers and stuff that we know that we can believe and trust.
Councilmember Lahat?
Saturday, we had the remembrance of the Flight Memorial that crashed in Kenner forty years ago. Good friend of Virginia in mind, Missy Trahan Ferreira, who was a miracle baby of that day. The only survivor who was found in the wreckage, and she lost her mother and her sister. So, she's coming and she's really well-connected to all the other family members of the people that perished that day. So, please come out and support or say a prayer for them, if you can. It's forty years, a tragedy, a long time ago, so. And again, I'm glad to be here and I hope we did a good job the first night here on the council for you guys.
Item eighteen is new business. This item was taken at an early juncture in the meeting. Item nineteen is unfinished business and our motions to reconsider are removed from a tabled position. We have none. Item twenty is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
Thank you. Linda, Linda Scheffler is the first person listed. If you can approach and just say, state your name and address. And I apologize if I mispronounced your name.
Okay, hi, my name is Linda Scheffler. I live at fifty-two twenty-eight David Drive in District Three. I am the second house on David on the south side of Vintage. And my husband and I built that house in seventy-seven. We moved in in seventy-eight and we're still living there. My problem has been with the IV waste trucks. They turn the corner from Vintage onto David. Now, that first part of David in front of the corner house and my house is blacktop. Then it changes to a concrete street. When that IV truck turns that corner, my house shakes. My mattress shakes, I can feel it. I never had this problem until IV took over. I've lived there since nineteen seventy-eight. Part of the problem, I think, is that previously, the garbage trucks drove from West Esplade to Vintage. IV now turns the corner from Vintage onto David Drive. And the blacktop area there in front of my house is in bad shape. There are parts of it that are sinking. There's a gully in one part. There are other parts of it that where the blacktop is buckling upward. And where the blacktop meets the concrete, there's a bump. And when that IV truck hits it, my house shakes. So, I have called IV. The first person I talked to was very polite. She took the information and nothing happened. Another time when I called, I asked to speak to a supervisor. Conveniently, no supervisor was available. This has been several months and I'm still waiting for the return phone call from that supervisor. Another time I called, I got a young lady on the phone that was explaining why my house was shaking and I could feel, sleeping in my bed, I could feel the mattress shaking. Well, you know, the trucks are heavy. That was her explanation. And she made it sound like, well, because the trucks are heavy, it's okay for them to shake my house. The time, another time, just recently, on about five-thirty AM on June the twenty-fifth, again, my house was shaking. I grabbed my keys, got in the car, and I drove down to the IV truck to talk to the driver. It was a very difficult conversation because the truck engine is so noisy. But he understood that I was trying to explain to him, he has to slow down, my house is shaking. His answer to that was, you need better foundation under your house. So, I am here to complain about that. And after that conversation with the truck driver, I gave up, and that is why I'm here tonight. What can we do about this?
Councilmember Lahat?
Hey, Michelle, how you doing today?
I'm fine.
I don't know if I've met you before. I'm looking at Google Earth right now. It looks like there's a juncture point between the blacktop and then the older road. There is, there does appear to be a bump. Is, is that where the bump, the shaking is occurring? Or is it occurring when the truck just comes down the street? In your opinion, I know you're not a contractor or anything, but what do you experience? Is it the bump causing the vibration or the turn?
No, I don't think it's the turn. The blacktop needs desperate repair. I have pictures here if you'd like to see. I took them right after a rain. And the cracks and the dips and all are showing quite well. I have two copies.
Yeah, I'd like to see those. If you could give those to me after the meeting or writing or after it concludes, I'm happy to look at that for you, okay?
Ma'am?
Yes.
Fifty-two twenty-eight David Drive?
Correct.
Okay, so you are the corner?
No, I am not the corner.
So-
There is a corner.
So, you, you may be the, what, the second house from the corner?
Yes.
Okay, and that's where the asphalt from Vintage meets the concrete from David Drive?
Correct.
And that's why, you know?
I'll be glad to go through the photographs with you after the meeting.
And, and that's a typical situation, you know? Concrete spans, asphalt spans, and the asphalt is flexible, the concrete is not. Normally, you will have that kind of condition. We would talk to IV Waste, but I think the main problem is probably related to that asphalt turnout. And from a public works perspective, we're going to be looking at that turnout, not only from the bump point of view, because if you got other issues with that asphalt turnout, we may have to deal with it.
Yes. There are, in two different places, there is a fairly decent crack that runs from my house to the empty lot across the street.
Fifty-two twenty-eight David Drive?
Fifty-two twenty-eight. It's on the paper that you were just handed.
Okay. We'll look at it.
Thank you, CAO Gonzalez, and thank you, Ms. Scheffler. Mr. Ryan Nugent, if you could state your name and your address, and you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Ryan Nugent. I live at fifty-four forty-four Earlanger in District Three. I'm here tonight to talk about municipal lighting in the City of Kenner. Like most cities across the country, we're in the process of transitioning most of our municipal and street lighting from the old high school, old-school high-pressure sodium fixtures to new LED fixtures. Unfortunately, this transition is not necessarily being carried out in accordance with best practices or with consideration given to public preference. In the LED era, lighting has become a complex subject, and even more so for municipal lighting. Color, temperature, intensity, diffusion, and shielding are just a few of the factors we should be considering every time we replace an existing fixture with a new LED fixture. But we have one thing working to our advantage as we make our way through this transition. Specifically, it's that many cities started making this switch years before we did. We have the opportunity to learn from their missteps, but as I mentioned, this isn't necessarily what's been happening here. Regarding street lighting in particular, intensity should be carefully considered. The output of a street light on a residential street doesn't need to be anywhere near that of what would be appropriate for a major commercial thoroughfare. The goal of residential street lighting is to provide a basic, base level of light for general safety, not to turn night into day. Color is also a major factor. Just as when you go to Home Depot to buy an LED light bulb, we have options when it comes to the color of our streetlights. Generally, selecting a different color temperature is as simple as checking a different box on the order form. Many fixtures are even color-selectable, meaning you can actually choose the color using a switch hidden inside of the head. Most, if not all, of the retrofits that have taken place throughout the city have been four thousand Kelvin. This very stark white light is okay for commercial corridors, but it's largely inappropriate for residential neighborhoods. With post-mounted lights in particular, like those in Chateau, for example, four thousand K light would look particularly absurd. These fixtures are literally designed to mimic the appearance of traditional gas lanterns. So, the cold white creates a very artificial feel instead of the regal sense they're intended to convey. Countless public opinion surveys conducted across the country have shown that the majority prefer street lighting that is in the range of twenty-seven hundred to three thousand K. In fact, cities like Chicago and Phoenix have even started tearing out the four thousand K lights they installed a few years ago to replace them with warmer lights. To put all of this into perspective, the high-pressure sodium streetlights we've become accustomed to burn at about two thousand K. A standard incandescent light bulb burns at about twenty-seven hundred K. The twenty-seven hundred to three thousand K light I'm advocating for is considerably wider than the old streetlights, but warmer than the four thousand K lights we've been installing. I'm imploring the city to please stop and consider these factors carefully before proceeding with any additional LED replacements. Anybody have any questions about any of that?
Thank you, Mr. Nugent.
I do?
Yes, Mr. Schworth. Councilmember Schworth?
I got a question for you. How would you handle a constituent that says the four thousand luminous is too bright? And that it shines in my windows at night and that we don't want that?
Well, that's what I said. Intensity and color are actually two separate issues. So, the numbers I'm referring to, when you hear me talking about four thousand K and three thousand K, those are actually talking about the color of the light itself. That's the scale that we use to measure the color. I actually agree with you completely that we do need to pay very special attention to output within residential neighborhoods, because that's precisely what we don't want to be doing with these new LED lights, is casting a bunch of light pollution or glare into people's windows.
Yes, Councilmember, Councilmember Lahat?
Ron, you're an engineer?
I'm an architect, designer.
Architect, yeah, we've spoken before. So, the light that you're, you're desiring, you know, some neighborhoods have the amber-looking light and some neighborhoods have the fluorescent-looking light. I know you explained that in scientific terms, which is actually really cool, just now, I thank you for doing that. So, the light that you're proposing we should use, is it, is it dependent on the color or are you dependent on just the intensity?
It actually depends on both, and these are all things that we have options. There are tons of manufacturers. I do a lot of my work in lighting design, and there are a ton of manufacturers that produce these products. And we have options in terms of intensity, we have options in terms of the shape of the head to determine how the light is shielded, and we have options in terms of the actual color of the light itself. And that's all within LEDs.
Okay. Good to know. Thank you so much.
No problem. Hope I've been informed of it.
Thank you, Mr. Nugent. I, I know neighborhoods that have both the incandescent and the fluorescent next to each other. That's-
Right.
It's my neighborhood, so, thank you. Mr. Richard Brown? If you can approach, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. Richard Brown, Sessions Lane in Kenner, District Four. And it's a new day in Kenner that feels great. You can feel the excitement in the air. I have felt it now for three months. Congratulations to the new council members. Congratulations on having a very good council meeting that had almost fifty items on it. Congratulations to Mayor Glazer and the team that he's putting together. I know many of the people who you're putting in supervisory positions, and I know they're very good. I'm excited about them. I know quite a few of them have worked for Kenner before, and it's exciting to see them back. It's exciting to have you as our mayor. And I, along with many other people, and I'm also president of Citizens for a Better Kenner, there are many of us who are excited about the future of Kenner and looking forward to a new day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Greg Teft, if you can approach and state your address, and you have three minutes? Okay. Ms. Stacy Alessandro? Approach, if you can approach, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Stacy Alessandro, District Four. I was wondering where Mr. Morella is. You guys were supposed to get baptized by fire today. So, he missed his big chance. Anyway, I just wanted to say how delighted I am to be here today with you guys. But more importantly, I am delighted that each and every one of you are here. Like Mr. Brown said, the air in the room is just different. The air in all of Kenner is different these days. Councilman Lahat, Councilman Schworth, Councilwoman Dunn, Police Chief Conley, and Mayor Chief Glazer. All of you guys made some very ambitious promises to us during your last race. And we were promised a new day here in Kenner. And for the first time, there is an air of hope and excitement in the City of Kenner. I'm looking forward to seeing all of these promises fulfilled and the ship righted. And don't worry if you don't remember what you promised us, because the citizens don't forget and will remind you. So, as an officer of Citizens for a Better Kenner, I'm here to tell you that there was so much alleged corruption under he who shall not be named, that I don't know how much time it's going to take for you, Mayor Glazer, to get to the bottom of it all. But I have faith that you will be able to eventually do so. And I am especially looking forward to that forensic audit that you promised us. In the meantime, I don't want to overwhelm you by asking for explanations or updates of what was done in the past and how are you going to fix specific things. I want to give you the time that you need. However, there are two things that I do feel that are most pressing at the moment, so I will bring these two things up. Number one is the IV waste and recycling issue. I touch on it briefly almost every time I come up here, but we only have three minutes and I can only fit so much into it. So, right now, I would like to formally ask you guys to please put this on the next meeting agenda, if possible, as a discussion item. Lee Zurich just did another two-hour special on this subject on Kenner last week. It's time for us to really examine this and not kick the can down the road any further. So, I would ask that y'all please consider putting it as a discussion item for the next, the next meeting, where we'll have more time to discuss it. And then finally, I want to also ask that we, at some point, put a discussion item on about our IDA recovery. Especially, I'd like to know about the attorney, Alvendia, who was handling our claim, who was hired on April fifth. Most people don't realize, our attorney was only hired a few weeks ago, not almost a year ago. Liz, I have two quick questions for you, if you can answer. How much have we paid Mr. Alvendia or his firm in the last twelve weeks that he started?
Ms. Alessandro, if you can, you only have a couple more seconds?
Okay, and my, and my, the follow-up will be, is if we have any outstanding invoices, how much are those? Thank you.
So far to date, we've paid one million, four hundred and sixty-six thousand. And we, as of now, we have no other outstanding invoices.
Yes, Councilmen, Councilmember Schworth?
To Stacy? To Stacy, oh, thank you, please. Thank you always. You always bring things to light to us. And yes, we do kind of remember most of our promises that we asked, that we brought forward to our citizens when we were campaigning. And I'll tell you that I'm going to do my darndest to fulfill all of those. And the only thing that's going to stop me would be money. That's the only thing I can tell you. I'm out there already solving problems on day six. And I will continue to solve the problems, all the way from the streets to any problems that the police department has, any problems that the fire department has. We're going to get on it. We're going to make sure everything's going to be held. Anybody's going to be held accountable, I can tell you that, even myself.
Yes, Councilmember Dunn?
I really want to thank the- I really want to thank the people of District One for showing up tonight to the meeting, because it tells me that you're very concerned about what's going on in District One, but know that we are on it. We've been working since I actually won in the runoff, so we are having one meeting after another, making sure that District One will not be overlooked and that we will bring it up to the standards that you have asked for, and we heard you very loudly. So, thank you tonight for showing up at the meeting.
Thank you, Councilmember Dunn. And we have one more member from the public, Melody Lawson. If you could approach and state your name and your address. You have three minutes.
I won't need half of that. My name is Melody Lawson. My address is eight forty-one Ronson Drive, District Four. My question is simply regarding the latest report from the mayor that the departments are moving out of this building into some of the city hall buildings. Just like to know if that's going to affect our monthly payments. I'm not sure if we are paying right now based on the amount of square footage that we're using, or if it's actually just a set rate.
We're moving out ones, some from Building D. The council advertised this month's council meetings will be, take place in this building, so through the end of this month, they'll be there. Next meeting, they'll have to extend it if we find another location. We have a, we don't have a meeting scheduled with the owner yet, right, George? But he's requested one to come make a presentation to this council. The issue is, he may have to come in person if he can't do a Zoom meeting here. So, we'll identify the people, the departments that move out of this building. Code enforcement is a large department and has a lot of foot traffic, and the court system, the same thing. So, to find facilities to house those two are going to be a challenge. So, my comment was, get out of this building as soon as possible, and I did, you know, make the comments that as soon as possible, maybe six months. So, we don't know. We're working with the council, will come up with a plan to get out, because nobody likes paying sixty thousand dollars a month.
Absolutely. Okay. Well, that, that pretty much answers my question. I just wanted to know if we would still, if that would impact our payment as we start to phase out of this building?
Well, we do. To be honest with you, I don't know exactly if it's just a set rate for the whole building, because we have stuff on the second floor and storage on the third floor. So, that all has to be taken into account where we, we move out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lawson. See no one else from the public that would like to speak? Motion to adjourn. Yes.